Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting for the city of Homewood, July 13, 2020. We're going to go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order and we'll begin with invocation and pledge. And Melody, did we have somebody to do the invocation? All right, Dr. Jones is going to help us with the invocation. After that, we'll follow the pledge. Everyone, please rise. Thank you.
Will you bow your heads with me? Dear loving God, thank you for all the many blessings that you bestow upon us and the city of Homewood. Thank you for life itself and the measure of health. We know a lot of people are suffering now and we pray for their health and hopefully they will get better. We have lots of people within the council that have family members that have been affected by COVID and other illnesses. We pray everyone to be safe and healthy. We thank you for our deliberation tonight. May it be in your glory. We thank all of this in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. And Melody, we'll begin with roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Waltney?
Here.
Mr. Thames?
Here.
Mr. Hickonbottom?
Here.
Mr. Wolverton?
Here.
Mr. McCloskey?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Wyatt?
Here.
Mrs. Andres?
Here.
Mr. Harden?
Here.
Present right.
Here.
Everybody's here.
Thank you. So we have a quorum. And just to let everyone know who's here and perhaps who was watching, we are still exercising social distancing rules and we'll continue to do that for seems the indefinite future. And we are encouraging masks. I certainly have mine and we'll try to use it. It really makes it difficult to talk and I know some are good at it, some are not. But just to let everyone know, and certainly we have these meetings available by Zoom and we'll continue to do that perhaps for the indefinite future as well. And we certainly welcome all those people by Zoom to the meeting as well. All right, so with that, we have a reading of the minutes, a couple of those. First, I will entertain a motion for approval of dispensing of the reading of the minutes for June 22, 2020.
So moved.
Second by Mr. Thames, second by Mr. Waltney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so those will be approved. And then we have the special called Emergency Council Meeting Minutes from July 6, 2020. Melody just got those out to us this afternoon. I was able to glance at them, so I will go ahead and see if there's enough to approve those. I'll entertain a motion for approval of those minutes.
So moved.
By Mr. Harden.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, could you mark my abstention on that?
And we have one abstention from Mr. Hickonbottom and Mr. Thames on the July 6 Special Called Emergency Council Meeting Minutes approval. All right, still approved. Next, we have board vacancies. We have a couple of vacancies. We now have the application period closed for a couple of supernumerary BZA at-large positions. And we have two of those and I think we have multiple candidates. So I think what we're going to do is set up interviews for all of those multiple candidates. Will we be able, how many do we have? I'm trying to think if we're going to be able to do them one night or, and I'm not going to try to schedule them tonight.
Well, I'll tell you what, instead of me, we'll- I'd say four or five.
I'm sorry?
I think it's at least four or five.
Four or five, okay. I'll tell you what, once you communicate with me, I will communicate with everyone else and we'll sort out whether we can do them all in one night, which would be most ideal for the interviews for those at-large positions to the BZA. All right, but those application periods are closed. And I believe that's it. We also have a historical preservation ward, too, that's still open and will close at July 27. We do have an applicant for that, but that one has another two weeks to go before closing.
I didn't put it on there, but that Board of Appeals that has the seven positions is still open as well. We have one person that they're-
One person for-
I think we have two.
Do we have two?
Yeah, because wasn't the one guy that you talked to that served on another board that wanted to be considered for?
Oh, that's right. So there's two potential that they're vetting. I guess, well, just to make sure that they meet the criteria.
Yeah, and I think, I know Mr. Pugh has already reached out to one of the candidates because he told me that-
I know one of the candidates that wants to be considered has been on it in the past, so he should be definitely.
All right.
So that's possibly two of the seven now.
I'll take encouraging signs where I can find them.
There you go.
So that's two out of seven, but that's still open until July 27. Mrs. Smith?
I think there was a Ward 1 Historical Preservation Commission spot that I think closed, I want to say, did it close today, Melody? Award 1?
I believe it closed two weeks ago.
Okay, so it closed two weeks ago.
Yeah, it closed earlier.
Oh, we do have two applicants?
Mm-hmm.
Who are they? I haven't seen anything.
I can see them in my inbox, but I don't recall the names. So we'll have to set up interviews for those as well.
Okay.
All right, so that's closed. Ward 1 will take care of setting up those interviews.
We'll take care of it. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, thank you for that. So that'll do it for board vacancies and appointments. And we have one amendment or addition to the agenda for tonight for committee referral, 11-07-20, which is going to be request authorize the mayor to sign a supplemental to original contract for the Aldott project along 18th Street, improvements from 28th Avenue to Valley Avenue, including the addition of a right turn lane on Valley Avenue at 18th Street. And that's going to be going to finance through our committee referral. Believe it or not, I believe that is the only addition to tonight's agenda, so while I'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda as amended.
So moved.
By Mr. McCloskey, second by Ms. Andres. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so the agenda is approved. Start with our consent agenda. We'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
By Mr. Waltney and a second by Ms. Andres. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Our consent agenda is approved. Old business agenda, first item we have is 13-06-20, which is a public hearing that's been continued from June 22 for consideration of a variance to a 15-foot setback requirement for a fence in the second front yard at 1114 Columbiana Road. I know we're going to continue this without objection. I don't know if we need any kind of report from special issues or if you have anything to add to that, Barry.
Well, I did communicate with-
Ms. Smith, sorry.
That's okay. I went and I did communicate with the homeowner right at the beginning of the meeting and they're having some difficulty getting their plans from their builder. So she just asked that we continue it until such time as they can actually see what the builder's planning and know what they need to ask us for, so.
All right, so without objection, we'll carry this over to our next council meeting, which will be in July-
27.
27.
27, all right. All right, so that'll take care of that item. Next item, 19-06-20, which is a public hearing for tonight. But the applicant is withdrawing this request. However, we still have to open and close the public hearing, so in order to do that, I'll get a quick report from special issues to confirm all that and then I'll open and close it and we'll dispose of this item. Ms. Smith?
Yes, so after our meeting last week, Greg told me that the applicant had withdrawn their request, so he asked that we drop the item, which we did, and we just need now to open and close the public hearing.
All right, thank you. And so with that, we will open a public hearing, make sure there is no one here to speak to a dropped item. Seeing no one, we will go ahead and close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion to drop.
Motion.
By Mr. Wyatt.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so 19-06-20 is dropped. 06-20, excuse me, 06-02-20 is a request for consideration of funding street improvements. This coming to us from councilors Andy Waltney and Brett Thames. And we'll begin with this item. I think this is a cursory item, but we have a report from finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The finance committee met on July 6 and voted 3 to 0 to recommend sending this item to work session and budget hearings.
Great. All right, so we're going to, funding street improvements is going to go to a work session and budget hearings. Coming out of finance, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that's a favorable vote and I don't think we need a resolution on that one.
Can you go set the work session tomorrow?
Let's do that later, since we got a couple of competing work sessions going on, but who's ever-
We've got a good time for the mayor to include his budget by the end of August, so.
Okay, so I'll turn to Andy and Brett since your names are on it, so you guys keep in touch. Good time for a work session on that one. All right, 16-06-20, request authorize the mayor to sign an annual maintenance agreement with Motorola for the radio system and NICE Recorded. Not sure what that is. This is coming to us from Lieutenant Brandon Broadhead and our E-911 director. And on this item, we will begin with a report from finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The finance committee met, voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval of this, so 3 to 0. And NICE is just the name of the company that makes it. It does not stand for anything. I asked that same question.
That's why I said NICE. I knew it.
But he informed me it's a very nice system.
Well, it's a very nice acronym, so there you go. All right, so we have that coming out of finance with a favorable 3 to 0 vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that authorization is approved. Next item is our committee referral agenda, which has been amended with 11-07-20. I'll entertain a motion to approve the committee referral agenda as amended.
So moved.
By Mr. McCloskey, second by Mr. Wyatt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so the committee referral agenda is approved. And next item into our other new business agenda, 07-07-20, which is a request to set a public hearing to allow one section of an eight-foot fence to extend to 10 feet in height to create a symmetrical privacy screen from the elementary school carpool line at 322 Grand Avenue. This is coming to us from Brian Wallace and Mr. Pugh, and we're going to set a public hearing on this without objection for July 27. Next, we have 08-07-20, which is a request to set a public hearing for consideration of extension to remove inoperable abandoned and stored vehicle, 1980 Oldsmobile, from 701 Grove Street in violation of our ordinances. This is coming to us from Ann Grant Wheel and Mr. Cook, our code enforcement officer with the police department. And without objection, we will set this item for public hearing for July 27 as well. And next, we have 09-07-20, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of June 23, 2020 through July 13, 2020, coming to us from our finance director and assistant city clerk, Mr. Burgett, and our city clerk and assistant finance director, Melody Salter. And who has the vouchers?
Mr. Thames.
Mr. Thames, okay. It's about time you get into this game. Welcome, sir. I hope you enjoyed your weekend.
Yeah, the year went by quick. Happy to do it. It was an easy first batch. There were no issues and I've moved to a foot.
Thank you, sir. So that's a motion for approval of the vouchers from June 23 to July 13. Got a second from Mrs. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so the vouchers stand approved and that will be-
2094.
Resolution.
Or the other one?
Thank you, 2094. Gets us to our last item of tonight. Request for consideration of an ABC restaurant retail liquor license for SB Homewood LLC doing business as Shrimp Basket located at 801 Green Springs Highway. This is coming to us from our city clerk, Melody Salter. And where are we on police and fire? Approval of this?
First, Mr. McCloskey.
Mr. McCloskey?
I didn't get a chance to talk to you, but they're having a change of ownership and so they wanted to see, to not cause a delay. We still need fire and police letters, but if y'all would just pass it pending, as soon as those letters are issued, we can do it so that if we get it for them, we don't have to wait till the 27.
Okay.
Motion to approve pending sign off from police and fire.
All right.
It's move to have no objection to the issuance of the license, but I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion, no objection for the issuance of the license pending police and fire from Mr. Wolverton and second by Mr. McCloskey. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that will be approved as well. Wow. Let's enjoy it while we can. All right, so that is the end of our agenda and Mr. Mayor, we'll start with you with announcements, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I think we're all far enough apart I can take my mask off. Just a couple of things. First of all, still getting a lot of emails, as I'm sure you are too, with residents asking the city to mandate the wearing of masks. And I think we're all aware that the Health Department and our chief medical officer has really already done that. But I do think it's important that we set the example. If you go inside somewhere, have your mask on. I think in Homewood, we've always, we've tried to care for each other and I really think that should be our message, that let's lead by example and when you go in, wear it to protect that business owner, to be able to keep them operating. If you're not worried about getting it yourself, worry about giving it to someone else. So I think in certain places, Edgewood and natural places that people congregate, people drive by and they see maybe people not wearing a mask even though they're outside, but they're really close. So just a reminder again to kind of stay away from everyone. And then, I don't know if any of you saw on Sunday, but we had a production crew in Edgewood and they were, they've asked that no pictures be posted because of Alex and Peter. Your attorneys understand more, but there's some legal ease about that. But we had a lot of people in from a lot of different places, Dallas, Louisiana, all coming in. But the exciting thing about it is that they have really began to focus on Homewood as a great place for these scouting agents to look at Homewood as a city that have all the things that they're kind of looking for when they're filming the commercials. This particular one was for Blue Cross Blue Shield. So I think that's kind of a feather in our cap and a testament to everybody that works and lives here, that we've got a place where others not only want to come and be here, but promote what we're doing. So congratulations to you on that. And with that, that's all, Mr. President. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, they didn't need any stars for the commercial or anything like that. I was going-
They didn't contact me.
I was going to walk by there and see, you know.
They contacted us, they just didn't want us in.
Thank you, sir. All right, so we'll begin with announcements. Mr. Waltney?
Just two things tonight. I just wanted to highlight from our previous meeting, the Green Springs, I'm really excited about this project and I'm glad that everybody's been involved and participating in the meetings and we had excellent public input in the meeting on the sessions we had. That's really going to be a transformative project for our city. We've done a lot of good work over there in the past and I think this is going to take it to the next level. The only other thing, I just wanted to thank Public Works and Director Squires, if he's still here, for lots of streets getting paved around Ward 1 in the city. All good stuff, seeing some streets that have needed a little touching out and getting it. And that's it.
Thank you, sir.
You set Public Works for the 28?
Yes, I'll set Public Works for 15 minutes at-
5:30.
5:30. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Waltney. Mr. Thames?
I do not believe I need to set P and D. Echo what the mayor said about masking up, but also if anybody has a free moment, I spent a little time over in Spring Park the other day taking some pictures. Go check it out. It is really a neat little park. The landscaping's come in and it's really shaded on one corner due to the large retaining wall because it's below the street, so it was cool. So I think sometimes we forget it's there, but it's really beautiful. It's really nice. And Park and Rec is doing a great job keeping it up, so if you have an opportunity, go check it out.
All right, thank you for that. I saw a picture of it. It is pretty spectacular, particularly the newness of it. We haven't had that over there, so it's really pretty exciting. Thank you for that. Thank y'all for your work on that. All right, Mr. Hickonbottom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to briefly thank all those folks who reached out to us with kind thoughts and well wishes concerning my mom. As you know, I was not able to attend our last set of meetings because my mom went into the hospital on the Friday before Independence Day and came out that Monday night following and has been staying with us. She is doing better and our hope is that with certain accommodations at her home, that she'll be able to go back home this week and return to mostly the lifestyle that she had previously. We'll see how that all works out, but I did want to thank everyone for their kind thoughts and prayers. We've had kind of a rough few months and so I do appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike, and thoughts and prayers to you, buddy. Mr. Wolverton?
I'd just like to echo what Mr. Waltney said about the Green Springs revitalization. I think it's going to be, you know, fantastic improvement for that whole corridor. It's going to connect both sides of town a lot better. I think honestly it's going to enrich the kind of businesses that want to come here and be here. So I think it is a really important and worthy investment that we're taking, you know, in the city. So thank you for everybody that's been working on that and Clark and Kirk for being here tonight along with Berkeley. I'm going to steal Jennifer's thunder first here. I was fortunate to be able to take a quick lunch break and be a part of the litter getter installation out in front of Target last week. That thing is neat, man. I just, especially after a rain like we had the other day. It's very full. And as Berkeley would say, it makes this West Coast, you know, get excited about the kind of stuff that we're pulling out of the stream and just cleaning things up, so. And then lastly, just, you know, I appreciate, you know, our Parks and Rec Department for, you know, in some sense, taking the risk to open this summer. I know that there are others, other municipalities that have not. It's kind of amazing to me that we didn't have a case of COVID sooner amongst some lifeguards, but I appreciate them, you know, being very proactive, shutting it down for a little bit. Hopefully we'll be back and open again soon. And I think largely most people I've talked to appreciate just the fact that they've made accommodations to be open even though, you know, signing up is not the most ideal situation and at least we still have been able to access that amenity for the city, so I think that's it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McCloskey? Thank you, Mr. President. The only thing I have tonight is to set public safety and Andy, you said 15 minutes?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll do 5:45 and that is it. Thank you. Thank you, sir. And Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The finance will call for 5 o'clock and we'll have about 30 minutes. And I just want to share that on the previous council, when we had deliberation around the first revitalization of Green Springs, and ironically, it was a little bit controversial. I mean, it was not a, hey, let's all do this. It really took a lot of work to get that started. In the end, I believe it was a great project and people got on board after that. And I just wanted to say, it was very refreshing now that we all see the value and we're all unanimous about this. Because it needs, you know, we knew at that time we couldn't afford to do everything, but we wanted to get a start on it, so we're finishing what we started and I'm really proud of that. And I just appreciate this council for being united in those type of projects. So anyway, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Andres.
It's a whole ward. Just skip right over. Just skip right over.
There's not an election in Ward 4. No one cares. That's the ward we can eliminate, guys.
Make this whole thing easier.
Tell all your neighbors I said that.
Yes, that'll go over well.
My apologies.
No, no problem. So I just wanted to, sorry, I thought that was me. I wanted to thank Fletcher Smith and his crew who went out last week in blazing hot sun and addressed the roundabout near All Saints. There had been complaints for years about the safety because of the rose bushes, so the plan is to relocate the rose bushes. They have not been relocated yet because now is not the time of the year to relocate roses, which those of us who have a black thumb would not know. But Fletcher knew and he told me that. And also, we're going to, once the rose bushes have been removed and moved to their new home, we are also going to re-sawed that and it's going to look beautiful. But that is also having to wait until the weather is amenable to that. So that's on its way. And then also, while we're giving shout-outs to Berkeley, who's not here anymore, last week, a friend who lives over in Ward 3 actually called me because there had been an issue where a tree truck had pulled down some lines and basically blocked an intersection. And it had been that way for three days. So literally, I went over there, texted a picture to Berkeley, Chris Thrasher jumped right on it and within an hour, Spectrum had come out, gotten the wires out of the front yard where they had been sitting for three days and opened the intersection back up. So just big thanks to Berkeley and Chris for taking care of that in such a quick fashion. So that was awesome. And I'll set special issues. How long do you need, you think, Patrick? 30 minutes?
Yeah, I'd say 30.
Okay, so I will, do you think you need more?
No.
No, 30? Okay. Okay, then I would set special issues for 6:15.
All right, thank you. See, who else is in Ward 4? Mr. Wyatt?
Thank you. I don't really have anything tonight other than to thank Ms. Smith for getting Fletcher out there too and getting him on that for us. Fletcher does a great job and that was an intersection that needed some help and I appreciate you handling that and getting that taken care of because that will be a big difference for that. But other than that, nothing else.
Thank you, sir. All right, now, Ms. Andres, you can go. I know you wanted to go before them, but now it's your turn. Thank you.
Well, I did, I will mention the litter getter. So I'm actually going to tell a story that goes just like this, all the way around. So last Friday, Andy and Britt and I were with our friends from the council roundtable from Hoover and Mountain Brook in Vestavia. We also have Birmingham, but they were not part of our recycling challenge. And we presented a check for $5,525 to the Firehouse Shelter. So this was the conclusion of our inner-city recycling challenge, which we lost. Mountain Brook won.
They were a loser.
It was, yeah, we didn't lose and we all won because we learned so much about recycling. But what we did was we had, we each all personally gave our own money towards the Firehouse Shelter. And then we also got a $2,500 donation from the Community Foundation of Greater Birmingham and another $2,500 from Birmingham Recycling and Recovery. So we got to present a check for $5,525 on Friday afternoon, which was great. So as we've been having these discussions about recycling and trying to sort of address some of the issues that we can't address currently at Birmingham Recycling and Recovery, we have found this company called NeoWaste, which a friend of mine, actually it's her and her fiance, and they, she was in my Leadership Birmingham class, so NeoWaste, it is in protocol, it's in sort of pilot mode right now.
Startup.
Yeah, startup. It's a startup, exactly. Yeah, startup, it's a startup, exactly. But, but if it is, they're, they're on the Sunoco campus right now, which is over by Red Mountain, and if this is something that can work, then they will be able to take all plastics, not just ones and twos. So, uh, threes through sevens, yeah. And, um, so, so the issue that we've had all along, which is what we were trying to inform on, is contamination, right? So we all are averaging 30% contamination, which is, um, costing us money because we have to pay for that then to get landfillled. So that's where we tried to do this whole education campaign. So, with NeoWaste, who is in discussion with Birmingham Recycling and Recovery, that takes that issue away. When we were at the litter getter the other day, Jessica Finley was there, litter getter Osprey Initiative is working with NeoWaste. So when they pull that trash out of the creek, that's where it's going to go, once she gets out of, once, you know, hopefully when they get up and running. Um, so anyway, it just kind of goes like this. It's a great, uh, if we could all just work together and just fix all of this.
Sorry.
Yeah, it's a recycling, exactly, exactly. So we, we got big plans, you know, we're about, we're about eight weeks away from them sort of working their way through the Sunoco situation, and once they do that, and then they, then maybe we're about two years away from her being up and running. Um, but it, but if it is a solution, man, it's going to be a really big game changer for us. So, anyway, back to the litter getter. Um, we did get a lot of litter on, uh, yesterday. Was that yesterday's big rain? And so I've got a resident that lives over on Lake Shore and Windsor, and he went and checked it out for me as soon as the rains were over, and it, the thing was full. He sent me pictures, and that thing was full. So Osprey goes out the next day. They were there this morning clearing that out. So, and they also said the one on Griffin Creek's doing great. So the one over on Redfern and Broadway. Um, thanks to Chris Thacker, he's awesome, too. I've got lots of thanks to send to him. And then I also want to mention the striping. So we've done the paving down here on, um, uh, 29th, um, and so they weren't able to strike because of the weather, but there is going to be additional parking spaces over closer to Highway 31. So you're going to start seeing real Rosemary and, um, Urban Cook House have additional angled parking like you see the rest of downtown. You're going to see that down there. We're going to pick up between 10 and 15 parking spaces down there, which is going to be great for them. So I did want to thank Berkeley for his help with that, and that's all I've got. That was a lot, that's all I got.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Harden?
I'm not sure how I can follow that up.
I know.
Yeah, um, first of all, I, you know, it's, it's campaign season, as we all know, as we're all dealing with it, except for Mike and, and Peter. Um, and, and, you know, people ask you a lot of questions about everybody and all this, that, and the other, and, and one of the things that I've told everybody is that there isn't anybody on the council today, anybody in the city that doesn't love our city and isn't, isn't passionate about it. Everybody takes a little different approach on how they deal with stuff, but, but, uh, that, that the city council is, is all passionate about it. Uh, Jennifer happens to be passionate a little more than a lot of us, and God bless her, I, I, I feel behind all the time with her, uh, but I'm grateful for that. I, I did have a chance to talk to the woman at NeoWaste, and, and it's pretty cool what she's doing. She's got a partner in India, and, you know, plastics made from, from petroleum products. I mean, it, you, you pour gasoline on plastic and it melts. So she's moving it back into fuel. I mean, that's the idea behind it. So, uh, it was really cool talking to her about it. Um, but the litter getter was, uh, it was different than I expected. I was concerned about a big, huge rain like that and that thing going down the stream, but I think the way they've got it, it seems like it hopefully will work, even, even when a big flood like yesterday comes. Um, but, but, uh, I think all is well, and God bless Homewood.
Thank you, sir. Um, oh. That's it. Um, no more words. Um, you know, the, the, the only thing I thought of, uh, I was, I wanted to follow up on Walter's comments, just thinking, uh, big picture stuff, and, uh, I'm going to kind of send it back to Walter and the former council, you know, for that foresight and that thinking ahead on Greens Springs. It's taken us a while to catch up with those lamp posts and all those sidewalks, where you guys put it out there sort of blindly. I remember when it came down, how many, was it 15 years ago? I don't know how long ago it was, but, um, I, I appreciate you pointing that out, you know, and, and we had the other GERD and, and, that was the same time, wasn't it?
The GERD, yeah.
Yeah, the GERD was the same time, so to, you know, which is some protective zoning in, in that area. Uh, but hats off, uh, to some of our former colleagues, uh, for that thinking, and, uh, and, and I'm glad that we can catch up and honor that part of our town, um, that has always been challenged and is still challenged and, uh, and, uh, excited about the new project. But I just wanted to point that out as well, just to give us a little history of the old councils. That's really about three, four councils ago. Walter, you've been around a while, buddy. Um, so, um, all right, with that, no further commentary. We'll be adjourned. Thank you.
That's a lot of stuff. Some of that are.